Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Pastor H. Clark Edwards from the First United Methodist Church, and then I will lead us in a pledge of legion of the flag. If you please rise.
Let us pray. Creator God, in this wonderful holiday season, we offer our praise and thanksgiving to you for all the blessings we have experienced over these days. We're indeed grateful for this beautiful community of which we live. We're grateful for the men and women who lead us in this governing body. Give them your wisdom in the decisions they make for this community. We pray for peace in this community and everywhere among all people, and that we truly can be a community that cares for its inhabitants. In the words of St. Francis of Assises, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is discord, harmony; where there is error, truth; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; and where there is sadness, joy." Oh divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the discipline of law, order, and justice for all.
Pastor Edwards, I want to thank you for taking the time to come and give us that invocation. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. We'll now go to the agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Commissioner Merker.
Thank you very much. I personally would like to table the proposed ordinances 14-031, 14-032, 14-33, 14-034, and E. The reason I'm saying this, over the past week, I sat down with the developers, I sat down with the neighbors in the area. What I'm hearing is indecision. What I'm hearing is the ability, hopefully, to compromise. Both sides have very strong points for what they want, but the word is "we," and when I say "we," I mean the people of Boynton Beach. This project, I feel, potentially could be a very good one. I feel potentially that the people who live where they do should also be considered, thought about. And what I heard personally is that I felt, I only can speak for myself, I felt there was indecision on both sides. I felt that both sides were going back and forth. I believe and I heard that both sides were talking back and forth to one another.
We haven't caught it yet. I'll call for a second.
Why are you being so rude? And simply to the point, it's that important a project for the city, and it's that important for the people who live in that area to be happy and satisfied. So as I stated again, I propose to table these factors, these ordinances, and I'm hoping I get a second.
Has a motion to table the items as stated, is there a second?
Before we go with that, Mr. Mayor, it's already tabled. Do we need to remove it from the table before we act upon it?
Well, we had tabled until tonight's meeting. Do we have to?
You could just conform the motion to the subject, which is to leave it on the table until a date certain.
I'm going to second that motion to leave it on the table.
To a date certain, would you have a date in mind?
Yes, I was hoping the new year, January.
First meeting in January?
Yes.
There's a motion to table those items until the first meeting in January. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I represent both parties, not both parties, but I represent the district in which this is coming from. I met with both sides, and I asked, did they ever have a meeting? And Tonya told me, yes, and that some residents that's here that needs to meet. I'm just saying, you know, I think it's best that both go back to the table, then when I hear it again, at least I know what was said by both parties, and that I know how to address both issues.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to hear from both parties if they're both in agreement with this.
I'm sorry.
I get conflicting.
Well, yeah, once you get a table, you can't have discussion.
Well, we haven't voted. We haven't. Now the mayor's correct.
No. Once the motion is tabled, you cannot discuss anymore. I have a motion seconded table. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So the motion passes four to one. Any other corrections to the agenda this time? Not as their motion approved the agenda?
I'd like to pull 6B, I'm sorry.
6B?
Yep.
Got it, okay. Any others? Yes. I know. Any others? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion ended. This takes us to informational items by members of City Commission. Tonight, I'll start with Commissioner Casello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quiet down a little bit here. Just wait one second till they... Do you have your discussions out in the hall, please?
Yeah, thank you for leaving quietly so we can continue the meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently had the privilege to attend the seventh annual Ending Homeless Breakfast held at the Kravitz Center, and what made this breakfast unique was that the large place was recognizing the Boynton Beach Fire Department for years of collecting and distributing the toys here for the holidays here in Boynton Beach. Now, this is not the only holiday that the Fire Department services. They also do the MDA, they do the, for the Heart Association, collecting thousands of dollars over the years for these charities, and I just want to give them a shout out. Chief Carter took the award, and I was very proud to be there with him. Also, during these holidays, it's a time of compassion and giving, and our public safety employees do a wonderful job in doing this. And Chief Katz's men and women shop with the cop. I think that's a great program where the Boynton PD fill their SWAT truck with hundreds of donated toys as they stand out. I think it's a couple of local Walmarts here where people donate the toys. Also, any cash that's donated, they go in and actually do shopping for toys for the less fortunate. But this is the one that really gets to me, because this is what our holiday season should be all about, and I'll read it verbatim how I copied it down. It was Officers Ward and Pamara, Pamora, if I, thank you, went to a local apartment Saturday following a 911 hangup. The little girl told the officers she was sad because they weren't going to have a Christmas tree this year. Understanding the family was struggling, these two officers did what makes them some of our finest. They surprised them on Sunday by delivering a Christmas tree, a stand, lights, and ornaments. That's our police department. We hear every once in a while, we get some bad press about one of our public employees and stuff like, but this, the crux of our departments are made up of these kind of men and women, and I'm proud to have them represent us here in Boynton Beach. And I thank you, Chief Katz and Chief Carter, for your men and women for what they do for our city. Well deserved, and I would just like to maybe just expand a little bit what this holiday season means to me. I had a, no, I would like to acknowledge, I had a life-changing incident in my professional career as a firefighter. It happened about 15 years ago tomorrow, in fact. It's being on a professional fire department. We got called out to a warehouse fire, and we were sitting down and having our dinner at the station as we do, and we got called, and, well, it turned out to be a tragedy. I lost six brother firefighters and friends that night. And every time the season rolls around here, you know, I think we lose sight of what we really should be thankful for and what we really should be celebrating. You know, they've changed days on me. It's now the day after Thanksgiving is called a Black Friday. The Mondays are called Cyber Mondays. I don't know what that means. Christmas is extended from the 12 days of Christmas to honoring 20 days to Christmas. I think the real gifts that we possess in this world are sitting right next to each other, right out here. Look at each other. I think the real gifts that we possess are sitting across from our dinner tables. I think the gifts that God has given us are when we open our children's bedrooms doors and we look in, and they're safe and sound and secure. And so I think we should keep that in our hearts toward this holiday season. It's not all about the craziness and the stress of shopping and gifts. It's all about humanity and kindness and compassion. So let's carry that in our hearts through the season, and I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. Thank you.
I almost want a table. I don't think I can match that passion there. November 19th, I went to the Forest Park Neighborhood Association meeting, and November 20th, I met with the Castle Del Mar developers, and November 26th, League of Cities luncheon, and that evening with Dimick Road neighbors. For the Sister Cities program, this, at the, after the tree lighting ceremony, they have an annual points in a sale fundraiser, and if you would like a point, they'll be selling them at Ace Hardware. Thanks for Ace providing the area. And one of my regrets was, I had it on my calendar, November 30th, there was a memorial service for Coach Cooper from Seacrest Atlantic, and I didn't realize I missed it till Monday. I feel bad about that, but I think, just want to mention one of my high school coaches. That's it.
Good. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I attended the League of Cities luncheon. Also this afternoon, as we go through a season of giving, today is a season of giving, this day, and I was honored just to be present at Habitat for Humanity as they dedicated their last house over in the district in which I represent. And the expression on the young boy's face when they gave him the keys, not his father, but him, the keys to go in. They would be spending their first Christmases in a home that they can call their own. Vice Mayor Casello, I want to echo what you said, sir. You said, as we go through this holiday season, I think we should do it 365 days, I'm just saying, as we represent the citizens of Boynton, we should never lose sight on what we should be thankful for and who we represent. And I have never been so proud to sit up here tonight and hear you say what you said, and to see citizens sit in the audience and clap. Thank you all. I'm proud to represent each of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Merker.
I'll say it simply and to the point. What my fellow commissioners said, I totally agree. But what I want to remind everybody, that this Friday, which is December 5th, we have the Christmas tree lighting, and we have the Hanukkah lighting, and that brings people together, to hold hands, to enjoy one another, to laugh with one another, and maybe even have a tear in one's eye. So I advocate this Friday evening, come on down to City Hall and enjoy it with all of us. And also, we have our parade this Saturday, and hopefully I'll see many of you there as we wave and smile and laugh together. Thank you.
Oftentimes, we don't take the time to thank all of you that come to the commission meetings and provide the commission and city staff with your comments and feedback. We want to thank you tonight. Your participation is vital to growing the city. As you go on your holiday travels this month, please place one of these on your luggage tags or your suitcase. We want everyone to know that Boynton Beach is in Florida, and to come work, play, and live here. If you haven't already received your luggage tags, please see Eleanor in the back, she's at the table back there, and she will give you one as you go out or whenever you touch base with her. You can get a brand-new luggage tags. Thank you. On Thursday, November 20th, I attended Cross Point Elementary School where they had their Career Day, and I was able to talk with two of the fifth grade classes and talk about the importance of education and careers that they may look forward to in the future. On Friday, November 21st, I attended the ribbon cutting at Tijuana Flats on Congress Avenue. The new restaurant opened up there on Congress, if you haven't been there yet. It gives us two in Boynton now. We got one out on Federal and now a new one on Congress Avenue. On Monday, November 24th, I chaired the Pension Board. On Tuesday, the 25th, I attended the annual legislation luncheon at Bethesda Hospital. We had senators and representatives from the state of Florida, and they talked about a lot of things they're going to try and accomplish this year at the legislature. And one particular one that was, had a lot of interest was maybe getting some regulations on sober homes that affects all of us in these communities. On Wednesday, November 26th, the city of Boynton Beach hosted the League of Cities. Each month, a different city hosts the League of Cities luncheon. All the mayors and elected officials from all the 38 cities in Palm Beach County usually attend these meetings, and we hosted that meeting, and they did a great job, both city and CRA staff that set that up. It was beautiful. And I want to say during that, it was announced that Boynton Beach, again this year, won the literary reading contest for all large cities in Palm Beach County. Our volunteers read to over 2,000 children in this city. That was a great, great thing. And today, December 2nd, with the city manager, I attended the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners meeting, and there we, the reason we went was because there was an issue there about pulling our cities out of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. We've worked with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council for over 20 years here in Boynton, and we're currently working with them on our town center development. They've always been great for us, they've done a good job, but somebody up there at that county commission decided maybe they ought to switch down to the South Regional Planning, and all the cities unanimously voted not to do that, and so we had to get up there and really argue with the commission, and we won. They finally decided that we're going to stay with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning. That's all I have?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, before we move on, I'd like to put out two kudos, and one is to Eleanor, who's our communication manager here at the city of Boynton, also to our city manager, Lori Laverre. We are, I had an engagement at Village Royal and the Green, and they were so happy to, I don't know if they was happy, but they was so nice to accompany me there, and I'm just saying, the atmosphere that we displayed there, I just want to tell them, thank you for, you know, going with me, and you know, although I made y'all look good, y'all made me look good as well. Thank you.
By the way, notice his new bow tie. Each week, are you promising us a new bow tie for the holiday season?
We're supposed to love everybody. It's a season of giving.
The next season.
Point of information, what was the county vote?
It was, pardon?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. They finally, after a lot of, we spent five hours there from 9:30 till 2 o'clock this afternoon, but we finally got a unanimous vote.
Yeah, it was worth it.
Next, we'll go to announcements, community and special events presentations. Presentation of a plaque to Sister Lorraine Ryan in recognition of being selected as Grand Marshal, 2014 Holiday Parade.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director, it is an honor to present to you the person that was chosen to represent the city as our Grand Marshal for our 44th Annual Holiday Parade, which will be this Saturday, beginning at 3 o'clock, going northbound on Federal Highway. For those of you who don't know Sister Lorraine, she has been a, really a vibrant force in our community for many, many years. As a medical missionary, medical missionary sister, and a former community health nurse, Sister Lorraine has dedicated her life to the service of others. Sister Lorraine moved to Boynton Beach in 1990 to take care of her elderly parents. She created the Women's Circle when she very quickly noticed a need to help poor and underprivileged women in our community. As an unpaid executive director, Sister Lorraine has worked tirelessly for the past 14 years and has built the program that now serves 300 needy women. She was instrumental in the establishment of the Boynton Beach Patch Program, which means Planned Approach to Community Health, and which later became Genesis Community Health Center. She takes an active interest in local affairs and continues to have a strong link with other local organizations such as the Community Caring Center and Bridges to Prosperity. And it is an honor to ask the mayor to present Sister Lorraine with a plaque acknowledging her as the Grand Marshal for our parade this year.
Sister Lorraine, if you'd come forward here. I just want to add that Sister Lorraine has been so successful that this year, we had to expand her facility. She's doing such a fantastic job in servicing so many people that we actually expanded her facility this year, and thank you. Sister Lorraine Ryan MMS, Holiday Parade, Grand Marshal, 2014. Congratulations, it's really worth it.
This plaque actually really belongs to the women at Women's Circle, even tonight are in classes so that they can reach their goals of employment. The journey goes on. Now today, I am here, but Saturday, we all are going to be at the parade and continue that wonderful journey. After coming to Boynton Beach in 1990, I joined with many of you and journeyed in the old high school, which we tend to continue to talk about, on the second floor where the Dick Weber Society was at that time. It's now called Hugs for Kids. We were taking care of children that were in distress. Then I've marched with several of you in marches against drugs, against violence, and I remember one, it was Up with Hope and Down with Dope. You remember?
Yes.
And then, yes, Patch. We did a lot of work with Patch, and now we're just so proud of Genesis Center. And it's actually almost 15 years that I've been at Women's Circle. And we have approximately hundreds and hundreds, maybe even thousands of women who through those 15 years have gained employment. I thank you so much for your support tonight. Please continue the journey with me and with these women, companioning them so that they will no longer be made poor, but they will be mistresses of their future. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Our next announcement is, in observance of the Jewish holiday of Hanukkah, the second meeting in December will be held on Monday, December 15th, 2014, 6:30 PM in the City Commission chambers. Normally, the meetings aren't Tuesday, but on the 15th of December is a Monday, because of Hanukkah, we'll be having the meeting on Monday, if you want to mark your calendars. And also, another announcement, the City Hall will be closed on Friday, December 26th. That's the day after Christmas, so City Hall will be closed Friday, December 26th. Okay, this moves us to public audience. Anybody in the public who would like to address the commission items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you give your name and address for the record. Try to limit your comments to a three-minute time period.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm Vivian Brooks, the CRA Director. I just want to invite all of you to come Friday night. As Commissioner Merker said, we have our holiday tree lighting. This is the 44th year. The tree is in front of the Children's Schoolhouse Museum. There are, will be vendors from our local businesses, and there will also be a free concert, Wonderama, which is a great fun band to dance to, and that starts at 5:30. The festivities start at 5:30. The tree lighting is at 6:30. Concert starts around 7:00, 7:30. And then the next day is, of course, our 44th year of the Holiday Parade at 3 o'clock, and I hope you come out for that because that is really one of our longtime traditions, and it is really fun. If you haven't been to it, you should come out. The following weekend, we have the Boat Parade. On that, we, you can watch that around the Two Georges area. We do own some property out there. You can come and view that, right next to Two Georges, just to the north of that. And then you can also view it from the Intercoastal Park. You'll be able to view it from there this year. So that starts around 5:30. At Two Georges, we will have music, we'll have Santa, we'll have things like that at the Two Georges area. Intercoastal Park, that's just a viewing area, I just want to let you know that. And then the following Saturday, we're having a holiday movie at the amphitheater. We're showing Elf, and there will be all kinds of children's, there'll be food and vendors there for you to have for children, hot cocoa and things like that. So all month long, there's all kinds of holiday activities for you and your family to enjoy, and I hope you all come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vivian?
Yes.
On the Boat Parade evening, are there any seating arrangements?
Yes, there will be bleachers at the lot with CRNs. There will be bleachers there. Intercoastal Park, I believe we are putting bleachers there as well. So there are, will be viewing areas.
Very good. Commissioner Fitzpatrick and Commissioner Merker to judges?
Whoever wants to judge. I'm not sure who are the judges this year. I don't run that part of it, so I don't know.
I have a question, since you brought that up. I heard a rumor.
Yes.
And it's only a rumor, but I heard that overseeing this Boat Parade at our new marina, that there is a reserved seat for a gentleman called Mark Harry George that no one can sit in except him. Is that true too?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Mark.
Just on another note, we met last Wednesday, so are we skipping tomorrow?
Yes.
I don't know, because they told me it was every other week now.
We could skip, but you still need to come in and sign checks.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
You're good at that, huh?
Have to be done. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Minister Bernard Wright, Bernard Wright Ministries, also a member of the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy. I just stepped in to commend the city. Good evening, Commissioners and everyone in their respective positions. Good to see you again, Chief Katz. I'd like to say that the city in calling on certain items and issues, they've been very effective and efficient in getting things done. Thank you for the commendation on, they had a pothole there, too, it was really deep, and he just immediately got, when I called him about that. And I just want to know, we appreciate that down there, and the city's doing a great job in just resolving issues when it's brought to their attention. I just wanted to commend them. God bless you, and you all have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
I am Gary L. Fishman of 3504.
Excuse me, the mic will move. You can move it.
Okay, sorry. I apologize.
You're making me lean.
Okay, now I just, I lost 10 seconds. Sorry.
We'll give them back.
I am Gary L. Fishman of 3504 Diane Drive in Boynton Beach. I've lived at the same address for 23 years. I truly love the city of Boynton Beach. Honorable city members, Commissioners, the mayor, city manager, and others, I come here to speak respectfully for but a moment. I am the president of the Diane Drive Neighborhood Association, and I have a comment about the potential of a park to the south end of our neighborhood to the north of L-30 Canal along Lake Idaho. Again, respectfully, here are my observations, and I speak on behalf of many. The traffic this park could cause would be of grave concern, as well as a potential disruption and crime potential. The cost of the initial workup, engineering, et cetera, would be extreme. The possibility of the proposed bridge, tunnel, roadway, and restrooms, electrical plumbing, liability insurance would come at a great cost to taxpayers. Connecting this park to the county park and Calusa Park would be a gigantic undertaking. The obvious problem here is that the land is landlocked. The city may be better served finding another parcel of land to construct their park without the huge costs. I am sure the excess funds, rather than spending on this expensive park venture, can be spread out for other worthy city causes. If I can leave you with, I have eight sheets of paper here, and there are eight of you up there. There are some excerpts from the proposed plan. Thank you again for your kind attention and allowing me to speak, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. If you just want to hand them to First Commissioner Hill, pass them down.
Sure. Thank you.
I think you all know me by now. My name's Audrey Gerger. I'm at 331 Northwest First Avenue. As you know, it's a historical house that you had designated with the city. And also, what's going on right now is the construction of the water meters being changed to the front of the property, and also, the water fire hydrants are going up and piping and everything. The yard, the whole area is a disaster. Okay, this is my problem. I've been told that you're going to be putting grass on the area. I have never had grass on the area. I, too, as of this month, will be here 20 years. I have a zero-scape landscape, and I am asking all of you to come and view it. You will not see any grass on this property. As president of the garden club, I designed the property with a lot of sculptures and stepping stones and gardens and fountains, and the landscaping is considered beautiful. You're welcome to come and see it, but there is no grass, and I do not intend to take care of any grass. Now, what you're planning to put in the front is where we park our cars. The house was built in 1927, has a very narrow driveway. I have put gates on both the driveway and the entrance. Now, you've taken away the walkway that I had for my entrance to the road, and you don't plan to put that back on. Now, I'll accept that, but the rest of it has to be put down as gravel. Now, it's been gravel, and I added peat, petals, pebbles, pebbles. And that's what I want back there, definitely no grass. I have never mowed in my life. I never intend to mow. I don't have a lawnmower. I don't have a weed eater. And the parking has to be put outside. I had a Miata so it could go in my driveway. Now, I just got rid of it, and I bought another little compact car. But people who have tried to come in with trucks and cars have always broken their mirrors on the side or damaged my gates, and that can't be. The front still has to be gravel. Now, I don't know what you're going to do about it, but I will fight it. So it's a zero landscape. Now, I know there's other people in the area that want to have this grass put in. They don't want the grass put in. But if you check their property, they probably have grass on their property, and they probably do mow or get somebody else to mow. I have absolutely no grass, and that's the way I want to keep it.
So what was that? Was that 331?
331 Northwest First Avenue. Right.
All right, let us look into that.
Please.
And see what we can do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. The month of November ended on a high note with solid visitation and increased donations by individuals. As a result, year over year, the museum realized increased gross income of over 25% over last November. Thanks to the cool weather over the Thanksgiving holiday, the museum also saw many grandparents accompanying and playing side by side with the little ones. December brings an assortment of activities, including this Sunday's Gift Bazaar. From 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, the museum will be the place to be for unique gifts for the holiday season. Approximately 20 vendors will be on hand with items from jewelry to children's books and clothing, unique craft items and beauty products. Joining the fun will be Peter Pan and Tinkerbell, as well as the man himself, Santa, from 10:30 to 11:30. Hanukkah with Ms. Helen is on December 18th. Friday Fun Days, of course, are every Friday this month. And as we wind up 2014, the annual Happy Noon Year event takes place. This event offers children a chance to celebrate like their parents. Activities take place beginning at 10:30, and at noon, there is an apple juice toast and balloon drop. The museum closes for the holiday immediately thereafter or after we finish cleaning up. We're looking forward to a new year filled with hands-on, minds-on, creative fun, and unique events. We are in, we ask you to save the date of February 28th, 2015. The museum is hosting a reunion bash and bringing together former Boynton Beach, Boynton School students and museum supporters. We're thrilled to announce that museum founders and Boynton School graduates, Nane and Curtis Weaver, are serving as honorary chairs for the event. The event will include both daytime activities, including some activities that we old timers used to play, and an evening of libations, dinner, live music, and an auction. If you or anyone you know attended the school, please let us know or let them know about the event. We are trying to bring quite a few people together for it. Save the date cards will be on the back. Many of you will be receiving some in the mail. If you'd like to pick one up on your way out, please do, and we hope to see you all on Friday evening at the tree lighting. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that, I want to commend you. You're really doing a lot of activities there now at the Children's Museum that helps to bring in some revenue to support that museum, which is greatly appreciated. We need it. But I just think that all the activities you're doing are fantastic. And besides saying, here you say there's stuff going out in the mail to tell people about all these events?
Mm-hmm, I guess there is.
That's important, yeah, because they won't come if they don't know about it.
Absolutely.
So that's great. Super.
Thank you.
Good job.
James DeVorsny, 2625 Lake Drive North, Boynton Beach, Florida. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilman, on behalf of the neighborhood of Lakeside Gardens, I'd like to thank you for the countless hours through meetings and through phone calls and through emails that you have provided your attention to us. It shows us that you are a committee that is in favor of working out a conflict, and we greatly appreciate your attention to our concerns. We also are looking forward to speaking with you guys in the future, and I think that we have some very concrete things that we could provide, that we could come to a nice resolution. Thank you again.
Welcome.
My name is Tony Morrow. I live at 2611 Lake Drive North in Boynton Beach, Commissioner McCray's district, and I just wanted to say that over the last few weeks, myself, Jim, our neighborhood, we've spent a great deal of time with staff. We've spent a great deal of time with--
Yeah, I think you're going to be discussing what we tabled.
No, no, we're not going to discuss that at all. I'm not going to discuss that at all. But I wanted to say how much I appreciate the staff, how much I appreciate the town, how much I appreciate neighbors. I sense something really special here in Boynton Beach. I'm a first-generation American. I had the pleasure of growing up with immigrant parents, and I have a love and appreciation for this country that a lot of people don't have the background to be able to understand. But we have a great state, we have a great city, and I think that when you look at Delray Beach, who people seem to be talking about all the time, and you look at West Palm and the development, and the things that are happening here in South Florida, I don't see any city that is in a position that Boynton Beach is in to really be as special as it can be. So I commend you for your hard work. I really admire the hard work that the staff is doing, and I hope that we really take hold of these opportunities and work hard and really turn Boynton Beach into what it really should be. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Finger. I am a resident of Leisureville in Boynton Beach here, going on 20 years, and we've enjoyed every year of it. We're primarily from Michigan, and we're down here for the winter months enjoying your beautiful weather. And over those years, we've used your ocean beach, and of late, we've not used it as much, but several years ago, Boynton Beach gave the handicapped people a free pass to use the beach. And two years ago, they took it away. They changed it, and now they are charging the $40 a year for the pass on the beach. My question is, is there any possibility that you could reinstate the free pass for the handicappers? That, I can't believe that there's that many that would make a big difference in your budget for the beach, and I certainly would be able to appreciate it more because our income is very limited, and we can't really come up with that $40 if we're only here four or five months or six months. So please consider reinstating the free pass for the handicappers. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to address the commission this time on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public audience and move to administrative. Appointments to be made. Tonight, we have some appointments, appointments and reappointments, depending on how you go. We'll start out with the Arts Commission. The first one is a regular appointment for Commissioner Casello.
I nominate Cynthia Edward.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion is unanimous. Next one is myself, regular appointment. Reappoint the current regular board member, Deborah Botoff.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Merker, regular appointment.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to table it for now.
Anderson Slocum.
Do you know who it is?
He's a current member, he wants to be reappointed.
Let's move forward. I apologize for my ignorance. I move forward.
With Anderson Slocum.
Second.
He's a current member. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Commissioner McCray, you have a regular.
I'd like to table mine.
Okay.
Second.
Well, you just tabled that. Show it has been tabled. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Cemetery Board, I have the regular appointment, and I would appoint Claudia, I think it's Stein, S-T-I-N-E. It's real small.
Second.
A current board member. Yep. I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one's Education Youth Advisory Board. Commissioner Merker, you have a regular appointment.
So moved with--
Carla Coldbrooks.
The first current regular.
Yes.
That'd be Carla Coldbrooks. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one's Commissioner McCray, regular appointment.
Hattie Miller.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one's Commissioner Fitzpatrick, a regular appointment.
Well, I was going to appoint Hattie Miller, so I wrote that down, so who else is up?
Stephanie Hayden.
So moved. Second.
I have motion second for Stephanie Hayden. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one, Employees Pension Board, no applicants. Nothing for the Financial Committee, nothing for Golf Course Advisory Committee. Next is the Historic Resource Preservation Board, none, no applicants. Library Board, first one is Casello, current regular board member.
Barbara McGee.
Barbara McGee is a regular appointment. I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Goes to Planning and Development Board. First one is Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I nominate Trevor Rosecrain.
Okay.
Second.
I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Casello, regular appointment.
Nicholas Sorecki.
Nicholas Sorecki, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is a current alternate board member. This is for a regular appointment. I'll do Stephen Palermo.
Second.
I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Merker.
Sharon Gravik.
Okay. I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. That's a regular appointment. No, I'm sorry, that was an alternate appointment. That was an alternate appointment. And Commissioner McCray, you have an alternate.
Patricia Conlon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Show the, any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous.
Just for point information, Mr. Mayor, that Sharon Gravik, she's going from a current regular board, now she's been nominated for an alternate.
Yeah, because it wasn't a regular appointment. Yeah. Recreation and Parks Board, I have the first one, it's a regular appointment. I'll do Rene Stern, who is a current member. Reappoint her.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion is unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Merker, regular appointment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Robert Lappin.
Uh-huh. Is there a second?
Second.
I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is McCray for an alternate.
Nicholas Skareski.
He was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Oh, Julie Mandello.
Okay. A second?
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Fitzpatrick, you have an alternate.
There's no other applicant that I see.
Stern, that's it. That's all four, right? Yeah.
Well, there's--
Three. Wait a minute.
One was appointed to another board.
Oh, yeah, because Nicholas Sorecki was off of there, because he went to another board. Only left three. You're right, I'm sorry. Okay. Takes us to the Senior Advisory Board. First one is Commissioner Fitzpatrick, a regular appointment.
Reappoint Gene Young.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Casello.
Janet Harris.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is myself. I'll do Tony LaRica as a current member.
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner Merker, regular appointment.
Kath, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Catherine Lynch.
Okay.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is Commissioner McCray, who's a regular appointment.
Dennis Chamberlain.
Is there a second?
I think it's Denise.
Denise, we're close.
Denise Chamberlain.
She might not think so.
She might not think so.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to Veterans Advisory Board. I oppose. So the motion unanimous. Takes us to Veterans Advisory Board. Commissioner McCray, you have a regular appointment.
Washington.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Fitzpatrick?
Kenneth Nichols.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is unanimous. Have one more. Commissioner Casello, you have an alternate.
Robert Manson.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. So the motion unanimous. Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, Commissioner Casello.
Toby Affol.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion is unanimous. The next one is myself. I'll do Scott Caldwell.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is unanimous.
I think that does it. Thank you. Okay. Now, all I do is find my agenda again. Here we go. This takes us to Consent Agenda. Item B was removed. Proves Resolution 14-126, approved settlement agreement with Yachtsman Properties LLC for underbilled water, sewer, and garbage services. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the settlement agreement. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking into this, and it's my understanding that since 2005, the city was unintentionally underbilling Yachtsman LLC there. The property's now up for sale, and he's looking for, he now currently owes a balance. He's got $125,000 worth of water bill. The property's up, is in the process of being sold, I believe. He has a offer on the property, and he's trying to negotiate the settlement with the city from $125,000 to $70,000. I don't think that's right. I think I've had constituents, we've had people here in the city of Boynton, single-family residents, where had their water turned off for non-payment of bill. I believe that the property's up for sale. There's going to be a profit made, and I think that this gentleman or this company here should pay their full value of what the services and water that they've used for the city. And I'm totally not in favor of granting the $70,000 settlement.
Any other discussion?
Can we hear from-
Yeah, I will. First, Steve, the board has any questions or not?
I have something to say. Thank you. Okay, what it is, we're trying to get, you know, sell the property. I'm just saying, you know, and this is over in Yachtsman, where it has been drug-infested, crime, et cetera. And this guy is coming in in good faith, you know, to put something, you know, there that will make it more viable for the citizen. It was not his problem. It was not his mistake. This was done by the city unintentionally, and I don't think that he should be held liable.
I concur with Commissioner McCray. I had the opportunity to meet with the potential owner. He has some wonderful ideas for the Yachtsman. Mistakes are made. In this case, it will wind up being a positive for the city once it's resurrected the Yachtsman arena. And therefore, I think it's a good business investment to get it going, developed, and getting in new business.
Thank you. David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane.
Yeah, tell me again.
I understand Yachtsman Plaza's been kind of on the downhill slide. The property, the two parcels listed on Proprietary Praiser's site are listed close to $2.8, $2.9 million. I'm not privy to what the sale price is going to be, but I'm sure it's probably going to be pretty close to that, maybe a little less, a little more. And I think that this person who's petitioning the city to lower the water bill by 70,000, it's like for him worrying about the curtains on the Titanic. This man's going to spend millions and millions of dollars, and he's trying to get out of $70,000. Like Commissioner Vice Mayor Casello said, there are residents in this city who've had their water turned off for a lot less. This is a big sale. The man is going to buy it anyway. It's not going to kill the deal, and it sends the wrong message to the residents who use their water, use their sewage, use the garbage, and they pay the bill every month. Unless there's some sort of legality that the city attorney could explain to the fact that the city undercharged, and these people can thumb their nose at the city, that's another story. But if they can't, the city should collect what it's due to them and send the right message to everybody who does pay their bill. Thank you.
May I please?
Yeah.
Do you want to say something?
Sure.
I'll come back to you.
Yeah, sure.
The point was, it wasn't, they weren't billed, and so they didn't know they owned it. So it's just piled up. I think it would have been shut off had they not paid it, but they didn't know they were in the rares. So, you know, this comes at the end, so I tend to favor the maker of the motion.
Made a motion yet?
Nobody's made a motion, but I think we should forgive it at the level negotiated with staff.
Let me throw something in, then we'll come back to you.
I'm sorry.
I understand both sides. I think I'm hearing, Vice Mayor made a good argument, I think, for the total amount, and then he also made some good arguments on why we might lessen it. I'm wondering if there's a middle ground. Would there be, Vice Mayor, would it be something like $100,000 versus the, you know, is there something you could be satisfied with?
I could be satisfied. I look at this, you know, this money, $70,000, $100,000, I looked at, like, for a position, a firefighter or a police officer here in the city of Boynton Beach, that's a salary. For this gentleman to sell his property for millions, and I don't know what his profit is, and I really don't care. But the fact remains is that although it was an error on the city's part, he still owes it. It was a service. It was a commodity that he used. And I think that, you know, by doing right by the city, he needs to pay the bill. If we can negotiate that up somewhat higher, I would be satisfied with that, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Merker, you wanted to add something?
I'm sorry. I don't understand. What I don't understand is if we, the city, made a mistake, then we, the city, should correct our mistake. That's good business. That's for other people who want to come into the business, into the city, and see that the city is there to negotiate, have an open mind, and no one's 100% right all the time. So to chastise someone for making a mistake that he or she did not make, to me, common sense says, let's make peace, let's move forward, let's get this area developed properly. And as Commissioner Casello said, it's not a lot of money, so therefore, it's not a lot of money maybe to him, and it's not considered a lot of money for us if we have to procrastinate over this amount of money.
Mr. Mayor, I did say it was a lot of money.
Yeah, I know you did. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I did speak to the current owner, Kobe Cohen, and there is some concern. There is not, this is actually basically a short sale, so there is no money being made. And he's actually concerned at this amount, the $70,000, that's a settlement amount. And we've lived with this in the CRA for a very long time, as Commissioner McCray said, and the new prospective owners have met with many of you to talk about what their plans are for it. There is precedent for what you're doing tonight, or what is on the agenda tonight, what staff is proposing. Another fact, a very large development that the city in error wasn't billing, and there was a large settlement made. So this is much smaller. But so, I guess I'm asking you, in the interest of getting this thing closed and moving it to the, up in the next level of redevelopment, if you could see it in the big picture of that there was precedent done in the past, because when there are errors made in billing, I think you can understand that a person wouldn't know that there's an error being made because they're not making the error. They're the person that the mistake is made about. They don't know. So at the end of this whole thing, he's got a giant bill, and he didn't even know it. So, and I told, he and I spoke, and I said, "Look, you're not going to get this bill written off." I told him that. I said, "That's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen." So, and I'm happy to see that there was amount paid or amount, you know, agreed to. But I really think the bigger picture is getting this property improved so it starts to return value to the city. And so it's not an eyesore when people drive up and down US 1, which is a major corridor in our city. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, what was the other property that was allowed to walk away from the bill?
I believe it was a condominium or-
Was it Hunter's Run?
Oh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But I know it was here when it happened.
You alluded to it. I thought maybe you knew.
No, I don't know. But I was here when it happened, and they had made a settlement for the very same reason. It was in billing error.
Did you negotiate with this?
Me? No, no, I didn't.
No, you didn't negotiate with this gentleman?
No, Mr. Kobe Cohen, me?
Yeah.
No. I told him he had to do that through the city. And I said that, and he wanted it reduced more, and I said, "Probably not." And I said, "I'm not going to do it, no," because I thought that was enough reduction personally, in my own opinion, because the services were rendered. So you can't have it to zero.
How did you come up with that number that you thought that was a fair number?
Oh, I didn't come up with that number.
City staff did.
City staff came up with that number.
Right.
I'm only asking you, in the interest of the bigger picture, to look at it.
Mayor, may I just clarify something?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff, okay, I need to ask you all a question. What was the amount that you all came up with?
Initially, the offer from the owner was $52,000, and we countered, I don't know, we started higher. Started higher and ended up, you know, just getting them up to 70. But they initially offered 52, and then we weren't, that was not something we were willing to bring forward.
Thank you. So then we got a counteroffer. We have some money that we're going to be getting in. You know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to take a motion now, but I'm in favor of all for motion that we accepted for the $70,000.
67 or 70?
Seventy, seventy zero.
The motion is to accept $70,000.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other discussion?
May I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
What Vice Mayor Casello brought up regarding the negotiation was with Hunter's Run.
The, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So the motion passes three to two. Okay, that takes us to New Business. Discuss the process of appointment. The CRA board seat that will become vacant on March 2015. Commissioner Merker requests the city commission to discuss how the selection process would take place.
May I?
Go.
It goes like this. The idea that citizens want to participate and volunteer to be part of government is very good and very healthy. All I'm saying here is that we should want, for the betterment of the city, for the future of the city, and for the progress of the city, to get new people, new minds volunteering. On the other hand, excuse me, on the other hand, I am not negating who has served or is still willing to serve. But to advertise and see who else wants to volunteer, to me, is a plus, not a negative. And it's called open government, to get the citizens more and more involved. Just like this evening, because of an issue, I see new people from the city here. I'm hoping that they'll find this meeting, I'll use the word, it's a light word, but I'll use it, enjoyable, let alone intellectual, let alone potentially something that they might want to be on a board, too. So in summation, what I'm saying is, I think this is good for the city, the running of the city, and it's good for the citizenry that they have an opportunity to volunteer. And I think we should advertise it, and any other boards like this. The CRA board is probably the most second, is probably the second most influential board. So that's why I'm bringing this up. And I think in December, we, the city, should start saying and telling and advertising, we'd like citizens to put their name in, and we get the chance to evaluate.
Well, our current procedure is, it's open to everybody to apply. You can come in, anybody come in and fill in an application for any board in the city. It's currently open at this time.
I'm saying, though, advertise it. There's a difference between new people who move into the city, even people today who are living here, they don't know. You're assuming. You don't assume. The object is to enlighten, not to denigrate, not to keep the olds until they die. You want new people interested and volunteering. And to advertise the way we can advertise is a plus. It shows the city wants to move forward and grow. It's very simple.
What's the board's desire?
When you say advertise, I, could you define what type of advertisement would you like to-
Lori, would you please?
Yeah, I'm picking on you.
Me could put an ad in the Palm Beach Post, or put it up on our webpage, or the CRA webpage. You know, we can put it out through social media, put it on our Facebook, things like that. But from a traditional advertising standpoint, we can buy an ad in the newspaper.
Well, I think whatever way we have to advertise it, we should do it. If Commissioner, if Vice Commissioner Casello brings up the subject, he likes bringing up dollars and cents, well, then let's just do it the way, any way that we could. There's no harm in it. People out here, you never know, one of them may want to be on a board. And the people who spoke this evening are professionals. They are educated. I had the opportunity to speak with them.
Then I would make a motion that we put it on our website. Is that something we can do?
I agree. Is there a second?
I want to ask the question. How do we advertise for the other position that's open? That's what I need to know, like for the golf board and cemetery board, all these other boards. How do we advertise for those? Is it on the website?
It's only on the agenda, and when the agenda is published, the openings are available.
Then that procedure is already in place. I think that it has not, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Let's try that and see if it works. If it works, let's use it. That's what I'm saying.
What are we trying if it's already there? Trying is to inform other people, to find other avenues, whichever way it may be. Lori, you mentioned not just on the website, you mentioned other ways to do it. The point is, and it should be continuous. It should not be a one-shot deal, like all of a sudden, it's March, so do it in the first week of March. There should be a procedure, a time procedure, that a board this important to the city should, the people should know about. And it should be continuous over a three, four-month period of time.
I have a motion to put it on the website. Is there a second?
And more.
It's my motion. I made motion to the website.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
I find it amazing that this city doesn't believe in open government. And you can quote me.
Okay, this takes us to-
Mr. Mayor, I take offense to that remark.
Well, maybe you should look in the mirror and realize what you said, because the idea that you don't want new people learning about-
I just agreed with you, Mr. Merker, to advertise it.
He made the motion.
I made the motion. You didn't even second it.
Well, one day, one day, you'll realize that there's thousands of people here that don't see it, don't know about it. And you, as a politician-
It's over.
Just like you run for office, and you want the world to know you exist.
Excuse me.
This is more important.
Excuse me. We go to legal. Legal pursuant to Section 286-011 Florida statutes. I am requesting a private attorney-client session, city commission to discuss pending litigation in the following case, CM plaintiff versus city of Boynton Beach and Stephen James Marina, defendants, case number, I won't read all that. Is there, when would you like this to take place?
Either before, perhaps after the next commission meeting. Probably need about 45 minutes to bring the commission up to speed on the case and ask for some direction on it.
I think we usually like to do it prior to the meeting. Is that correct, everybody?
And that's going to be on that Monday?
That Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Okay, I might have, okay. I'll see what I can do, but I might have a problem getting down in that 45-minute thing, but I'm just saying, but I'd be up for commission meeting.
Say 5:45?
That's fine.
5:45, that gives us 45 minutes.
All right.
Okay, 5:45 next, Monday, the 15th. If anything, I see no other business coming for the board. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stand adjourned.